It is seven o'clock. All right. Welcome to today's Design Review Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, March 1st. First, we'd like to establish a quorum. I'm gonna call Commissioner on my right side, Commissioner David Blockus here, and left side Commissioner Chapi Mantika here, myself here. So we have three. We have a quorum. Before we proceed, we'd like to see if any member from the public see if they have any request to speak that's for the item that's not on the today's agenda. You can, you can.
I don't know why my picture's there.
Please raise your hand to the staff. If there's a member of the public who'd like to speak about an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand in Zoom, then please, if you yourself provide your name, providing your name is optional. This is only for items that are not on the agenda, not for current items on the agenda. Chair, there does not appear to be anyone, Mr. Greenhut, did you wish to speak about an item not on the agenda?
No.
All right. Let's continue to our first item of the meeting. That's to approve the meeting minutes from February 15. Does anyone have any question or like to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 15th meeting.
Can you hear it?
Not really.
What are those on for?
Members of the public, if you please meet yourself. Thank you. All right, let's take a vote. Commissioner Blockus?
Aye.
Commissioner Mantika?
I, myself, aye.
Motion passed, approved, 3-0.
Chair Ma, just for the record, so I can confirm. So the first, our motion was made by David Blockus and the second was by Commissioner Mantika.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to item number two, discussion, item number two. That's SC 22-0035 at 825 Parma Way. This, well, item was continued from our February 1st. Sean, let's have your presentation.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Ma, and Commissioners, the project before you is 825 Parma Way. Before you, on the screen, is the proposed revised rendering for the front project in the packet. Again, the project is located 825 Parma Way. The project, this provides the site plan, which is provided to you in the previous meeting. Design Review Commission previously reviewed this item on February 1st, 2023, and they continued the item unanimously with following direction, which is in your report, that the second floor master bedroom along the front elevation shall be revised to have a maximum plate height of nine foot six inches, that the window trim along the front elevation shall be added to the windows along the side and rear elevations to make the windows more consistent, to provide architectural details of the window, to add evergreen screening on the left north side of the property, to make the center gable of the porch more balanced or symmetrical with the house, and add a street tree along the front edge to reduce the appearance of mass and bulk. The applicant's response, as indicated in the report, was the applicant did lower the second story master bedroom to nine foot six inches. That is conveyed on the screen before you and also in the packet. In response to the Commission's direction for the window trim to be added, not only along the front but along the sides and rear, as indicated in the packet and on the screen, the applicant did make such revisions consistent with the Commission's direction. In regards to the Commission's direction to include architectural detail for the window, the applicant did provide architectural details that is shown on the screen in the red clouded area. Just provide a section detail of the, of the window. In response to the Commission's direction for the applicant to add evergreen screening on the left or on the west side of the property, the applicant did not modify the landscape plan, but staff does recommend condition three, which requires a landscape plan be modified to fill in the left north side of the property with evergreen screening. The screen shall be a minimum of 15 gallons. In response to the Commission's direction to make the center gable of the porch more balanced and symmetrical, the applicant did not modify the design of the front porch to respond to the Commission's direction. However, the applicant did add a crepe myrtle tree in front of the porch to minimize perception of asymmetry involved. In addition, as part of the final direction from the Commission regarding adding a street tree, again, the applicant did add a crepe myrtle tree, which is on the city's street tree list, along the frontage of the property. This concludes staff's presentation. Unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, any Commissioners question? For the staff?
Yeah, I have one. Regarding L3, the landscape plan that we have here, it appeared on the left side and the rear, there are going to be seven, I can't read it. Yes, seven trees or plants that reach six to eight feet tall. Was that an addition? Or was that in the original plans?
It's my understanding they were a part of the original plan set. The applicant can also speak to that.
That is correct.
Okay, and the same on the other side, on the right side?
That is correct.
With the exception of the crepe myrtle, the landscape plan.
Okay. And then, I don't see anything in regards to any, assuming the dry wood is currently existing, it's going to be torn out, there's going to be new sidewalk way. Is there any plans for new fencing along that side of the, closest to, what, 839? On the 839 side?
On so along the left side of the property, they are proposing a six-foot-tall wood fence with two-foot of lattice. On the right side, they're retaining the existing five-foot-tall wood fence. I, and then they are retaining the existing fence along, or they're proposing a new six-foot-tall fence along the rear of the site. But there are no proposed additional modifications. There is no direction from the Commission to change fencing.
And what exactly is a hogwire fence?
I, I don't know. The applicant would have to speak to what is a hogwire fence.
Okay, because there currently is a, you know, a metal fence with see-through slats. So, yeah, but I guess reserve that question for the applicant.
Before we move to open up the question, Commissioner Mantika, do you have any question for the staff?
No further questions at this time.
Okay, so let's open the, to the applicant, would the applicant would like to come up and speak about the project?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Let me share a screen here, a quick. So just to answer the Commissioner's question about the hogwire fence that looks kind of like this, so it's a, it's a see-through, there are quite a bit of oak trees in the rear yard, so this will help actually having that view of the trees in the back. So let me start a quick presentation here. Most of it already been covered by Sean, but I can just briefly go through that one more time, and I, we have a high John Lau is the architect for the project also on the call in case any questions come up. So, as Sean have listed, we had a number of the concerns that came up in the last meeting that we were able to address most of it, or mitigate it at least. So there was a plate height concern, and then there are also window trims and details, and then the porch placement and front yard tree that was proposed, and then the, there was a neighbor feedback on the privacy screening trees. So just quickly, as Sean mentioned, that we did take in that suggestion to bring down the plate height of the primary bedroom upstairs from 10 and a half to nine and a half. So that, that has been addressed, and the window size has been also reduced by a foot for both width and the height. And window trims, as Sean noted, that we had added all, all that consistently across all elevations. And we, the, regarding the porch placement of the structure, that, that we worked with the homeowner and the design team to try, try to figure out if there's a way for us to accommodate that, and there were a number of challenges that we came across, and there was one option of trying to expand the porch that caused issue with the egress window issue. And then we also tried to look at things from the structure point of view, the upstairs and downstairs wall line had to be aligned to be able to support the structure load in, in the future. And one of the most important thing was the fact that the the homeowners had specifically laid out the floor plans that satisfied all their needs, and it was very difficult to make the changes in the floor plan to adjust the placement of the porch. So as a mitigation, we are proposing the new street tree, the, the category tree, class, a class A tree to be in the middle of the house to diminish the look of the, the, the porch being not centered. We also found a couple of examples on the same Parma, Parma Way Street that the porches were not exactly in the center, just to kind of share that as an example here. And then there was a comment about adding a tree. We are proposing a tree as mentioned in, in the areas where the porch is at, so that can be a mitigation as well as accommodating the tree addition requirement. And the final comment was about the, the neighbor's feedback about the privacy screening trees that they requested along the side of the, the north side of the elevation, and the, the homeowners would really like to keep that area somewhat of a low, low profile landscape for their, for their own purpose, and instead of installing tall trees, but in, in in, in response to that, we have, the owner, the homeowner has agreed to remove the bedroom window, which was over six feet off the sill height originally, but this, this is looking toward the, the neighbor's bedroom aside, so the, we have decided to delete that window. And then there's a one window that's about five foot sill height, which is for the bathroom, and we will make this as obscure casement window that opens toward the front, so it doesn't have the view of the neighbor's rear end of the house. And then there is a one bed, one window on the front of the house, but because of the way that it's the, the second floor is designed, that it does not have any view of the, the neighbor. So just to kind of share more visually, this is where the current house of 825 Parma is, and then the neighbor's house, and the front part of it is a garage, and the rear part is the, the primary bedroom that the neighbor is mainly concerned about. And as you can see, the windows on the front side does not have a view of nearly any part of the building. And that the second one from the bathroom, the obscure window will open up toward the front of the house, will not have the view of that primary bedroom, which is located at the end of the house. And I just copied the, the original, the outreach letter that the neighbor had signed, even though there were comment that came afterwards. And then this is the last slide that shows the existing current two-story house that will be demolished, and this the, the second floor, there is already a window that's looking down toward where the primary bedroom of the neighbor's house is, and that's about three feet sill height. And so there's a existing issue there in, in a way, and obviously, we're not going to have a window in that place, so we expect this to be more of an improvement than, than hurting the privacy of the neighbor. That's it. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Any question for Commissioner for the applicant or the applicant's architect?
Really appreciate the illustrations you gave us, Jenny, explaining all your thought process and the decisions that you ultimately chose. Really nice. Thank you.
I just had a question on that. Any conversations or any pushback from the neighbors at 839? Who are on the right side of the property with the low fence?
Um, there was no feedback, and they were happy with our design and the sign the letter in the first attempt of outreach effort.
Great, thank you. All right. I don't have any question for applicant. So we should open up the public comments. Any comments from the public related to this item? Please raise your hand.
Can't figure out how to raise a hand, I'm sorry. Jeez.
If a member of the public can, raise your hand, and just to meet yourself and provide us your names, and I'll take your names in order.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, this is Linda DeMikell from 640 Birchwood Court.
Okay, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, we submitted the, our issue in correspondence to the Commission. Our concern has to do with the privacy in the rear. As noted, the current fence and the hogwire fence are both see-through fences. The new house will be quite larger and considerably further back on the lot than the present house. The oak trees that are there on the applicant's property are relatively small in terms of circumference. They provide partial screening of the second story of the house. Our concern is more with regard to the first story of the house, because we have a fairly direct view into what we are assuming is going to be the rear patio, the family room kitchen area of the new house. I realize, we knew the former owners of the house, and we've been in their backyard, and we realize that the view from their house to ours is quite different from our view into their house. We're kind of looking upward at it. So we see a fair amount of the backyard, more than you might expect if you're on the property at 825 Parma. So our request is that screening shrubs be added along the hogwire fence, preferably. We noted that in the current landscaping plans, there's Morella Californica along the rear north and south fences, although nothing on the, the fence that backs to the creek. So we'd like to request that shrubs of that form. Again, I think that's a good choice, actually. The Morella Californica is a native. Be added, some shrubs be added along the rear fence to provide screening for us. Sure. You can say that.
Is that all, or are you?
Yeah, do you have any questions?
Okay, any, any question from Commissioner? For the neighbor?
The only question I have is, a lot of neighbors have open backyards with see-through fences and whatnot. I think that's one of the reasons they live backing up to the creek, it's sort of an extension of more expansive space. What is your backyard fencing?
Um, we have a metal fence, much like the fence that is currently on the property at 825, but we'd like to note that most of our neighbors do in fact have screening, even though they have metal fences. For example, 805 Parma has some shrubs that have now reached the height of their fence. The property north of that has a fence that's screening within the fence. The property to the other side of us has actually a six, five or six-foot wood fence. So the, there is not, there's already not an obstructed view into the creek from there. We have some shrubs and an oak tree that are mitigating the view from 825 on to us, but we don't have the, the benefit of having a mitigated view onto their property.
Okay, thank you.
We're not asking that the fence, you know, that everything be blocked off, just that some trees be added judiciously so that our view is somewhat screened.
Okay, Commissioner, any question?
Not for the moment. The only, the only comment I would have on that would be, is it shaded? Is it too shaded for these plants to grow? I wouldn't know, I would have to, we would have to consult with the landscape architect if that was, that was a possibility. They get enough sunlight?
I, I have some input and comments. I mean, my, just trying to remember my last visit from almost a month ago. I kind of remember along the creek, there are, you know, quite a bit of existing trees and shrubs, vegetation along the creeks. So at the time, I mean, I did not look closely, but my impression, looking at the backyard, is that there are some, you know, screening already. I, my question to the neighbor, did you, did you communicate with the applicant at any given time before? During the, during the application process? Or did they approach you? I mean, what kind of communication did you have? For the neighbor. My question is for the neighbor.
I'm sorry, it looks like I was muted. They approached us very early on with what looked like just a conceptual picture of the, the facade of the house, much like the one that's on A3 in your packet. We did not see the landscaping plan until it actually was part of the packet submitted to the Commission. So while we would have expected to, it did not seem appropriate, and, and the lack of information to have pursued this issue until we saw the plan. As I indicated in my note, we had a very serious medical emergency in our family, so we were unable to contribute to the February 1 meeting. I apologize for that.
Okay, um, I'm trying to see if we can come up with a condition that's, that's visible between the applicant and the neighbor. Oh. All right. So let's put this aside. I want to see if there's any other member from the public would like to speak on this item before we, we go back to talk about this screening between the real neighbors and the applicant. Any, any other neighbors would like to speak? Or anyone from the public? Would like to speak? Please raise your hand.
Sean, anyone else? No, we did not. Anyone, and just as a reminder, since the member of the public spoke, the applicant has a five-minute rebuttal that's permitted.
Okay, sure. All right, Jenny, you have five minutes. You want, you feel free to answer the neighbor's question or propose something that, you know, we can try to work it out on this, this item.
Sure, thank you. So what I would say, three things. Number one, they're actually very tall oak trees. There are plenty of them in the, in the real yard that makes the sort of natural screening there. Is one thing I would want to call it out. And then the second thing, even when I was discussing the screening trees in the rear side yard that is already on the landscape plan, our landscape architect had concerns about those trees not getting enough of lighting, just because of the very tall oak trees that are in the rear yard. So we're putting in the plan for privacy purpose anyways, but there were concerns. I can submit a separate statement on that if, if that's required. And then the third point is that we were specifically looking toward the, the, the neighbor who have just spoken up, the 640 Birchwood. From the, our property toward their property, the only part that is visible is the part of the rear yard that, that has a swimming pool partially. So there's a very limited view of, of the property from, from our side, which we can provide a picture, a view of that as well. And I, I know generally speaking, the, the homeowners have a conflict today, couldn't make it, but there plenty of trees in the rear yard and with the landscaping planning. I, I'm sure the, the homeowners would love to keep the, sort of a, you know, the proposed trees as, as on, as proposed on the plan.
Right, thank you. Okay, and I'm gonna close this one and just have our Commissioner discussion. Would I can go first? Commissioner? What? Would I can go first, discussion?
Oh, yeah, so yeah, I think the project's fine as is. They've done pretty good response to the, the five issues that we have that we asked them to. They reduced the sill plate height, the windows actually, I think, went above by taking away the upper window in the, the one corner. Really, my only concern was more towards the neighbor on the other side with the small fence, but they haven't indicated anything negative, and, and they actually have a lot of privacy screening on their own yard to protect their, their side yard and their backyard. I do know along that creek, there's a lot of people who own there who like the open fence, who can see, and it makes their backyard look a lot larger. And I think the reality is, in any two-story that's built, you're not going to have 100% privacy. We're looking more towards reasonable level of privacy, and I think that sort of fits the description here that they've done a reasonable, good job, especially with the four trees in the corner, that, you know, for everyone concerned, the, the property or the project means that level of reasonable privacy. So I support the project estimate.
I agree with Commissioner Blockus, and I would like to make a motion.
Okay, let me put my some comments here. Yeah, the, I, I don't have any further problem with the the house design, you know, the revision is, it's, it's good. And so right now, with the concern about the left side, 805 Parma, the, like what Commissioner Blockus said, the, the second story window, all high window, and the applicant delete one window and make the, the second one obscure. So I think that's pretty good gesture to address the, the neighbor's concern. And as far as the real neighbors, I believe the distance is pretty far, far enough. So I would like to, but still, I would still like to have some communication, encourage some communication between the neighbors, applicant, and then the real neighbor. Since the real neighbor missed the, the last one because of their, their medical emergency, and now they raised their, their concern. Even though I know the concern may be minor, but it, it depends on both sides, because I've been on, on either side, so, you know, before, as a neighbor and as an applicant. before as a neighbor and as an applicant. So I, I know how to feel on both sides. So I would like to defer this one encouraging both sides to communicate about screening to the staff. Sean, do you think that's gonna work for you on the staff level?
Uh, yes, I think the Commission in the past has asked applicants and neighbors to work together to, to respond to particular issues that you have concerns with. We've done that before.
I think this is pretty minor. I don't want this item to hold up the, our decision, you know, for tonight's decision. So with that being said, who would like to?
Actually, I have an additional comment. I don't think the fence being rebuilt on the left side, closest to eight oh five, makes any sense because it's already a tall fence. I think it's like seven foot, something like that, and it's in good condition. So I think that was item four. I don't have it determined. In, in the actual.
The existing fence?
It, it, it's not in the plans. It's in the remedy. It talks about.
Conditions?
You know, having a new six foot plus two or seven plus one fence. It's in the, it's in the notes.
Yeah, I saw, I, I saw that, yes.
I don't think that is necessary to have to, I think it was a request from the actual eight oh five not to have that fence taken out and put a new one in.
Do you want to ask the applicant, is there any reason that they would like to stick with it? Would like to replace that with a new or do, do they have any?
Yeah, maybe you can answer a question. Why are you replacing the fence on the left side?
Can I answer?
Yes.
Oh, great. So it was just a part of the mitigations that we were proposing that we could, if we, if that's what a neighbor would feel more comfortable with. But it, it, there's no need. As you mentioned, there's already six plus one foot lattice fence in there.
Okay, yeah, because I think we got correspondence, late correspondence, Sean, that indicated that the neighbor in eight oh five did not want the fence replaced. Yeah. So I would pull that off of, that, that's not a condition, is it?
It is not a condition.
Okay, then we're good.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to approve SC twenty two dash zero zero thirty five, eighty, eighty, eight twenty five Parma Way. As is. As, yes, and subject to neighbors talking to each other to come up with a mutual solution to mitigate privacy.
Well, now it's subject to the.
Subject to the, to the attached conditions and findings? And have the neighbors talk about it or just? Because if we put a condition on the neighbors figuring that out, they may not figure it out.
Additional condition, defer with the condition, with the additional condition, defer that screening to the, to the staff.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary, but.
Okay. So generally, those items are usually recommendations.
Recommendation.
Recommendation, not a condition. It's a recommendation that they work because it's, unless you give specificity, it's hard for us to have resolved that through a condition.
Should I change the word of a condition to a recommendation as posed by my colleagues?
Sean, you got a second?
Yeah. Let's just clarify, it's approved projects of the, to the attached listing or findings and conditions in the project with the additional recommendation that the neighbors talk about. About the privacy screen.
Correct. And second. Okay, so I'll call to vote on my left side, Commissioner Nometika?
Aye.
Commissioner Bluckus?
Aye.
So I, motion pass three to zero. All right, congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to Commissioners' report and comments. Future agenda items, I guess that's the next one, the last one, the March fifteen.
So we do have a full agenda on. So the Commission, the last meeting had directed that we continue the item eighteen forty eight via work date to this meeting. Part of unknown reason, staff's error, it didn't make it on the agenda. So it will be going to the, to the fifteenth meeting. We have, we noticed that, that the public is aware that where previously was directed specific dates, now changing to the fifteen. So that'll be a future item. We do have two additional items that will be considered by.
Are there any other items that are out there that we had sent back for modification?
I don't believe so. We have some that are holding up because they would likely result in continuance. So they're asking to go forward with the future zoning administrator because it's likely going to be a few meetings with them too. So some are holding up because we advise them, we have concerns with their projects.
Okay. Right. Anything we'd like to bring up? Anything else? Commissioner, staff?
It's good to be back amongst all the people.
Role change, didn't it?
All right, so right now it's seven thirty seven, meeting adjourned.